I'm going to call today's regular meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. Good morning, everyone. At this time, we will start with an invocation by Pastor Jeffrey Stafford of Mount Calvary Missionary Baptist Church. And immediately following our ask of Councilman Hart, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would we all please stand?
Thank you so much. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, Thou who hast brought us thus far along the way, Thou who hast by Thy might led us into the light, keep us forever, we pray. God, we come and we acknowledge that our feet have strayed from the place where we met there. We come, God, admitting that at times many of us, all of us, have been drunk with the wine of the world in our thirst for power, position, preeminence, place, prosperity, and many other things. We have hungered after things that are unrighteous. We have gone after things that are unholy. And God, even in the midst of it all, You have remained God. You have remained patient. You have remained pliable. You have condescended to those who condescend Your name. You have kept us, Lord, even when we have not consented to Your command. And so, God, we come here thanking You first of all for presence, for a semblance of peace. We thank You for Your personhood and every person that is represented in this space. God, we lift up this council to You. We lift up this mayor to You that as they deliberate and discuss these items on the agenda that are waiting, some are wanting, and even some are worrying, that You will give them wisdom, that You will control their tongues, that You will control their thoughts, their tenor and their tone. God, we ask as they put forth proposals for procurement and policy position that they be reminded that every decision that is made here affects every kindred and every kind of this city, those who have education and those who lack, those who are economically well off and those who are economically worried, those who are in the middle and those who have amassed much. And so, God, we need Your forgiveness. We need Your faith. We need Your forging ahead spirit as we look forward to a brighter and better day in the city of Jackson. Lord, we know that Pharaoh is on our track with policies and positions and plans that would not only take over our city, but regulate everything that we do, from how we are policed, to wearing what we pay for our water, to our health care, to our general well-being, to even eliminate our very voices from the fray. And so, God, we ask that this council exercise Your good judgment as You have ordered government to do. We pray that this mayor will exercise and execute the policies and plans that are promoted and provided by the council's power. We pray that the council will trust the mayor's decisions and wisdom in how to move the city forward. We thank You, oh God, that You have given us a spirit not of fear, but of a sound mind. Lord, we know that there are many things that we could ask on this day, but we'll sum it up and simply say, do what you do best and do what you've always done. Rule, superrule, and even overrule those who go against You in the name of Him who created it all, in the name of Him who controls it all, in the name of Him who commands it all and challenges all of us to be more than we have been before. In His name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's my pastor from Ward Two.
Yeah. And let the people that understand and the people of God say, amen. All right. At this point, colleagues, first of all, I would like to ask, is there any special introduction that anyone may have? All right, with that being said, colleagues and those that are here, as we know that this is a very special month where we celebrate and we have an opportunity to highlight and to encourage not only our Black History, not only Black History Month, but even the living history that we're living. And so, colleagues, we have at this time my great friend from Jackson State University, Dr. Mark Henderson, and the Mad Drummer troupe that will perform for us this morning to highlight Black History Month on behalf of this city. And colleagues, if you would like to be able to really see the presentation, I'm going to step down, but I would give you the invitation for us to step down for the dears. And at this time, I'm going to ask if Dr. Henderson will come in his own way and approach the podium and introduce the troupe. And we're going to step down so that we can watch. Let's give him a hand.
Thank you all for inviting us, and we are Mad Drummer from the campus of Jackson State. And Mad Drummer is spelled M-A-D-D-R-A-M-A, and it means making a difference doing respectable and meaningful art. And we are proud and excited to be here. And we were trying to decide what would be a good piece. What are we doing, y'all? Okay, we, let me tell you, we've been so busy. We just left Old Town Madison Middle School performing. We got to go to Blackburn. There'd be so many places. I forget what we're doing. But I have a group of students who takes control and do it. And we decided to do a charge to Jackson, to be excellent without excuse. And that's our performance of Excellent Without Excuse. I guess we can just... Yeah, come on. Yeah, go in front of the chairs. Yeah, yeah. We want to see you. And then, excellence without excuse.
The present conditions and dark circumstance make it appear that I have not achieved my offer be exempted. This fact I admit. I have a little bit of just a little faith in this, but in spite of the things that stand in my way, I'm determined to be.
Somebody someday, somebody someday, somebody someday.
There's no running, blood pressure through my veins, no great family backgrounds for me to remain. My living condition, I've been kind of bad. I haven't had that luxury that others have. But it makes no difference what folks think it's like. I'm determined to be.
Somebody someday, somebody someday, somebody someday.
Y'all may think we made a poor start. Well, maybe we have, but we handle that part. At the end of each round, we'll be on our feet. Is there something enough that's hard to beat? The fight may be tough, but I'm here to stay because I'm determined to be.
Somebody someday, somebody someday, somebody someday.
There are truly some places I like to go. There are truly some things I like to know. There are truly some things I like to see and something special I like to be. Let others do as they will or may. But as for me, I just gotta be.
Somebody someday, somebody someday, somebody someday.
Because I'm unstoppable now. I'm education bound. I gotta take the whole world's frown and turn it upside down and show all the nonbelievers that great people still produce out of the skin colors of white, black, and brown.
I gotta go far from here, but not from home. So I'm footprinting my steps so that others know where I'm from.
I got goals and dreams to achieve. So I'm pressing my way to the top where I ought to be.
I gotta make my creators proud of me so I stand high enough so my parents and God can see. You see, I gotta believe in me, shake this way of excuses off of me and trust no matter what. Opportunity still waits for me.
And for you.
But you gotta have excellence without excuse. Not what you could have done or should have done, but what you thought about doing.
To climb the ladder of success.
And you want to climb that ladder because it is from there.
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 From everywhere that you can see the view. Excellence without excuse.
You are today's choice and today's challenge. You are the ones that we dare to be different, are the ones that we dare to make a difference. It is up to you, Jackson, Mississippi, to recognize that the answer lies within you.
To the cipher.
To the duck.
To the deuce.
To deliberate.
And to control.
What does it mean to have the latest iPhone or the newest Marc Jacob bag? It's not the outside that needs to be made up.
What it is?
It's the inside.
And it's okay to have the latest Broadway album, whatever, new dance that Charlie doing.
But, but, but.
What?
The real dance starts when the music stops.
The real dance starts when the music stops. Excellence without excuse.
You can be anything you want to be if you want to think bad enough.
To go out and fight for it, to work day and night for it, to give up your time, your peace, and your sleep for it.
If life things are useless and hopeless without it, and all that you scheme and you dream is about it.
And gladly you sweat for it, fret for it, dream for it, lose all that time or all that thing you call fear free.
If simply you go after that thing that you want with all your capacity, strength, and sagacity, faith, hope, confidence, and stern pertinacity.
If neither sickness nor pain, a body or brain can turn you away from the things that you want.
If dogged and grim, you besieged and beset it, then surely, Jackson, Mississippi, excellence without excuse. You'll get it. Go for it.
I am Devon Doty, a junior civil engineer major from Mayfair, Louisiana.
I am Delisha Alexander, a senior computer technology major from Bolton, Mississippi.
I am Intoni Sellers, a junior psychology major from Forest, Mississippi.
I am Cindy Stevens, a sophomore public health major from Gainesville, Georgia.
I am Ashley Tangle, a senior criminal justice major from Jackson, Mississippi.
I am Cheryl Wilson, a history major, junior, from Atlanta, Georgia.
I am Cody Powell, a sophomore speech theater major from East St. Louis, Illinois.
I am Gabrielle James, a junior, a business administration major from Chicago, Illinois.
And we are?
Mad Drummer Performance Troop.
Thank you all for indulging us, and we're going to encourage us to continue to be excellent without excuse. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Y'all, let's give Mad Drummer another hand. And, you know, we want to take the time, you know, and he done asked, and he might get on me later, but I think it's very important that we highlight and that we encourage greats like Dr. Mark Henderson, whom could be anywhere. And I know that at one time there were offers, but he stayed right here in Jackson, and he's just one of the most humblest guys I know from right up the road in Canton, Mississippi. So let's give, let's give them another hand, and thank you so much. Is there any, yes, if you all hold for comments from colleagues in the administration, Dr. Omari?
I'd just like to thank my colleague, Dr. Mark Henderson. He's been doing this work for a long time. I remember when I started the Smart Institute at Jackson State. He did a Mad Drummer performance emphasizing the importance of self-care and mental health. So it's just good to see it move from one class to another. He never stops. Thank you so much for this work, and thank you, students. We are going to strive for excellence without excuse.
Colleagues. Colleagues, any, any responsible, yes, Vice President Lee?
I just would like to thank the students for taking the time out and learning this and coming before us to inspire Jacksonians and us as leaders to make sure we're doing our part, to make sure we're leading and not giving excuses. And thank you, Dr. Henderson. You know how I feel about you. Thank you for all of the work you do and pour into the community.
Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Henderson has been special to my family. I had a daughter some years ago that finished number one out of Jackson State. And when my mother picked up her masters, he was a mighty, mighty young man, and she used to talk about him all the time. She used to call him her son, and he'd keep the spirit of helping young people. That's how young people rise to the top, by having role models like Dr. Henderson, who love them and tell them that they're special. Keep up the good work, doc. God bless you.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes. Any other colleagues? Dr. Henderson and Mad Drummer troupe, we thank you all so, so much, and we appreciate you. We're always rooting for you. Thank you so much. All right, colleagues, we'll go to public comments. We'll start with those that were present, then I'll check the roll again. For public comments, you have three minutes. There will be a yellow sign that will be held up to let you know when you have approximately somewhere around a minute or 30 seconds left. And then, when the red sign is raised, we'll ask that you please stop. Not to say that what you have to say is not important. We will take ear and we will listen, and it will be duly noted. But it is, we have an agenda with a lot of items. And the, a lot of the workers that are here have to get back to work, so do we. And so, we ask that if you will respect our time in that way. And so, we'll start with Alice Buchanan. Yes, I got it right. Thank you so much. I practiced just a little bit after you told me.
Thank you. Good morning to the city council.
And if you tilt, tilt the mic, yeah, there you go.
Okay, they're better?
Yes.
All right, thank you. First, I would like to say unless required by statute, I'm not consenting to the use of my name, image, or likeness by the media. I'm here today because I have a complaint when it comes to Jackson water. I have lived in Jackson for, I'm a transplant, for over 20 years. And the problem that I have is I wasn't receiving my bills. I have been trying since October of 2023 to get bills. I've had to go online to pay my bill. Those bills online are not itemized. They don't show what it is that you're paying for. And there's no in-person office or facility for Jackson Water System customers to go in and have this address. The average hold time when calling on the phone is five to 10 minutes. With constant disconnects, there's no way to identify who you've spoken to previously when you do call back. So every call is a reset. On average, you spend 10, you spend 30 or more minutes speaking with one person. In order to complete any business, it can take up to an hour and a half. Also, I asked to speak with the supervisor. You cannot speak with the supervisor, I'm told, when you call. You have to have a supervisor call you back. I called on 2/15/24, asked to speak to a supervisor for clarification on my bill. As of today's date, 2/27/24, no one has called me back. So I don't know what I can do because my bill is absolutely incorrect. There's a portion on this bill that says that there's an assistant program, but I don't see where it's being applied to the bill. Also, my water bill for the period of January 8, 2024 through January 6, 2024, the actual water usage was $7.29. My total bill that I owe is $155.62. And yet Ted Hennifin consistently wants to find a way to increase the fees that we have to pay for water in Jackson. Something's wrong here. Absolutely wrong. Where am I looking to see where my time's at? Right you? Okay. All right, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm just disgusted. I'm on a fixed income. I'm retired. I don't have a whole bunch of money. I used $7.29 worth of water, and I have to pay $155.52. I did have a payment plan, but I'm being charged twice for my payment fees. There's a $40.81 fee, and there is a, I'm told, $54.44 fee. But I can't talk to anyone. There's only a phone. There's only, I've sent messages. I've done the internet.
We'll set our caller's number. And just so that we can have it, you can email, what ward are you staying?
Yours.
You staying mine? Email me.
I've done that. Sorry, Mr. Banks. I've done that. You don't respond.
Well, no.
You don't respond.
If you email me about the water, I forwarded it to Ted Hennifin.
You don't respond, Councilman.
All right. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, Jade Jay Jackson. Councilwoman Lee?
Colleagues, this is a friend of mine's daughter who was a cheerleader at Jackson State. Jade is a, also a student at Jackson State, and she has a wonderful event that she is putting together and would like to tell us about. So Jade?
Good morning, and first, thank you so much, Vice President Lee, for having me here. I'm so excited. My name is Jade Jackson. I am a senior marketing major at the Jackson State University, and I'm here to talk to you guys this morning about an exciting event that we're having. It's called Sneak Peek. And with Sneak Peek, our aim is to introduce an exhilarating and engaging event to JSU this spring, celebrating not only sneaker culture and the rich HBCU culture, but also shining a spotlight on our talented entrepreneurs, musicians, artists, and future business leaders like myself. The, this unprecedented occasion marks the first of its kind, and we are dedicated to delivering it with unmatched excellence. This event is happening March 24th this year, and it's going to be on a Sunday. And it is an amazing event. It's going to have music, art, fashion, sneakers. It's going to be a great event for you to bring your children and maybe prospective Jackson State University students so that they can see what we're doing in the College of Business and what we're able to achieve as students because this is a completely student-led event, and I'm just really excited about it. So thank you all so much for having me and listening to me. Thank you so much, Vice President Lee. You all have a good day.
Jade, speak about the sponsorships.
Oh, yes, the sponsorship packages. So we have three main sponsorship packages. If anyone is interested, we have the Sneakerhead package, which is the largest one. This is if you would like to donate $500 plus. This is, all the funding is going towards the College of Business. And the second package is the Sneaker Enthusiast package. This is a donation of $200, $250. And the Sneaker Novice package is the last one, and it is, it comes with $150. And each of these packages comes with a different perk, and some that I'll just name for you really quick would be signage at the event, green room access, early access, and a post on the Instagram page. So for any updates, if you guys want to know more about the event, follow JSUCOB as well as Sneakpeek. That's S-N-E-A-K-P-E-E-K, uni, U-N-I. And those are both on Instagram.
Thank you, Jade. And where is the event going to be held?
Within the Jackson State College of Business.
Okay, hold on just a moment. I have colleagues that would like to say some comments to you. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you so much. Jade, it's an honor, privilege, and a pleasure to say thank you. Thank you for caring. Thank you for reaching out, and it's been easy. When you try to put a program like this on, there's so many things that couldn't go wrong. And naysayers try to discourage you and everything. And, you know, probably some nights you even cried a little bit, but it's going to be successful. And you keep on moving forward with it. Get ready for the second one next year and keep growing. And you make Jackson State University look good and feel good about the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Wish you much success. You know, I'll be there in support. And we would be remiss as leaders if we did not open this platform up for our youth to bring forward their ideas and use this platform for their, for their projects. So good luck for Jade.
Thank you all so much.
Do we have John Holt here? Okay, Darlene Lomax, are you present? Okay, you have three minutes, Ms. Lomax. And please state your name for the record.
Hello, I am Darlene Lomax, and I am a citizen here in Jackson, grew up in Jackson. And because of you who are here, whether you know it or not, you need to do some history thinking, Black history, because it was Henry Kersey. And I bought this back, this, I made it, got up this morning, stayed on my mind. So, you know, we talk about a lot of blacks, but we don't get a chance to talk about some of the ones that have you here today. Now, Henry Kersey was one. He was a professor at Tubaloo. He was a legislator, and he was a fighting activist. I got a chance to read and read about him. And I said, some of these men and women up here don't deserve to be up here for the reasons why he said we needed more wards in our community. And then I've also thought about buy black. Buy black. Think about buying black when you go out and look for people to do work. Then there is a powerful days. They came from MLK. We have some powerful days coming here in Jackson, Mississippi. Anytime we can have power struggle over certain things, the garbage, all citizens should help clean up Jackson. I have been all through Jackson in some areas where some of you have wards. It looked like a war zone. So where have you been that you don't know how your ward looks? You need to resign, okay? Citizens must do better. That's true. Because they trash all around the houses, trash all in the streets whenever they finish eating or whatever. Now, some of the concerns we need to be worried about is the volleyball court a building that was built with welfare money. You all talk about a lot of things, but you don't talk about how these government officials stole the welfare money from our children, our families who are on welfare. And then we go on down to where are the leaders? Where are the leaders? I see the yellow. I will stop. But where are the leaders? You can't go to church and find them. I brought it up at a church. He just waved me away. I said, we don't even hear about voting in church anymore. We don't hear about any of that. But oh boy, let me get down here. I got one good one. Children are not having free lunch this summer. Your governor have decided there was no... Your governor have decided there was no, no school offering free lunch for our children. And we don't know whether they're going to eat or not, even when they go home for the summer. So, we need to think about that. And federal officer coming to town, Ted, whatever his last name is, Mr. Butch, our president, I went to one of his town hall meetings and I'm asking Ted questions and he felt like, hey, I need to stop you right now. You have something to say. You want to come out to somebody? Come out to Butch.
That's my dad.
That's what they call me, Butch. And he went on and said, and they call my mama Sadie. And he went on and said something about his grandma. What kind of professional is that? A young black man had to come up and say, you should apologize to this little black lady. You think he did that? He waved his hand and went up another way. I don't care who followed, Mr. Butch.
Thank you.
You guys need to think twice when you go and vote. Because Butch is not for you. I understand you said three minutes. I understand it's time for me to sit down.
I'm going to ask.
Now.
I'm going to ask nicely.
You ask anyone you want to escort me out of here. I don't care. Ms. Lee, I want to thank you for the certificate that your office did for Ms. Paul. Mr. Stokes?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank you for what you all did for Etha Manger.
We thank you for all your work.
Butch, I want to thank you for getting caught. That's how karma comes back to you, brother.
All right. Thank you so much.
And I want to thank all of you for listening to me. Because it was just a matter of time. Butch has to get here.
No.
And what's for me is for me and what's for all of you, it will be for you. God bless all of you. Take care. And I will be coming back.
Thank you so much. My daddy's nickname is Butch, for those that were looking. He's from Chulam, Mississippi. That's his nickname. My nickname is, yeah. All right. Thank you. Anthony Walter? Okay. All right. Thank you so much for public comments. Now, we'll go to consent agenda.
All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So moved.
Second, it's been moving properly. Second on this item, are there any questions or comments? Here none of us, all in favor? Item passes seven zero. All right. We'll go to, we'll go to introduction of ordinance.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ordinance of the City of Jackson, Mississippi, to prohibit the award of a solid waste contract to Richard Disposable Inc.
Councilman Stokes, before we, well, I know that there's the need to, to discuss and explain, and this goes up as an introduction, but because we have to go before a regulatory agency in the state of Mississippi, that the language in this or what's said could cause the implementation of more fines, what we're, based on what we're already facing, I'm going to ask if we could have that discussion in executive session if you would like to discuss your thoughts. And then after that, it would be my plan to put it in committee until after we get more understanding and clarity, because I don't know if we have all gotten the latest update on, from MDE, well, from MDEQ.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
We tried to keep this ordinance as simple as possible so it wouldn't have any negative effect with the regulatory agency. If you look at it, it's not in there, it's not a long ordinance. What we dealing with more than anything else is the issue of past performance. We believe that, as the lady just spoke, was just saying about how the city is trashy, our streets are trashy, our neighborhoods are trashy. And she said that we all, when we ride through our wards, we all to see it. The past performance is poor. And we believe, we believe that the city of Jackson deserve better service. We deserve another company. And we believe that time is of the essence. Less than 35 days from now, less than 35 days, something must be done. That's an agreed order there with a judge. Councilman Foot has put an item for discussion on the agenda. We got the week, month after month, and at the last minute, they're going to try to force some down our throat that we don't like to taste of. It's time for us to act as a council and make some decisions. Legally, the only ones can vote on this contract is the seven of us. The mayor can't vote. Legal department can't vote. We have to make that decision. While we making that decision, we need to consider the people that lives in our wards, trash that could have been picked up, that used to be picked up, sitting out here on the streets. Rats are so big in my ward, the cats are scale of them. Rats. When you leave trash on the streets, rats going to come, roaches going to come. It's a nasty, nasty situation. We must change. We can't go down that road again and hope for something better. When it's been shown to us, this is the best you're going to get. And we don't give a doggone what you think, because we're going to get paid. So, I hope we'll move forward, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Stokes, this, again, this is an introduction. And, you know, it, it can roll over for the next two weeks, but, but to have greater discussion, we can go into executive session today to have discussion, to, to talk about, you know, this and what it means. Or we can wait, discuss it in committee, or we can deal with it if it comes back up for adoption.
I would hope we'll have a special meeting. Again, we're talking about an agreed order with a judge that gave us to the end of March. And March is, what, about 48 hours?
Yes, sir. I, it is my hope that the administration would present the vendors and the outcomes to us as soon as possible. Hopefully, we will have a special meeting as soon as possible. I do understand, I've said publicly, that I think we all deserve the right to take whatever results to our constituents and give them time to have feedback. And hopefully, we can have that process. I do understand the nature of having something put before us a week before the deadline and not even given the opportunity to talk to our constituents about it. So, hopefully, the administration, and there has been some conversations, I've told you, will present something as soon as possible. And we are willing to call a special meeting this week if we have to, so that we can have this. And the sooner the better, because whatever the details are, at the end of the day, whatever it is, it's about the service that the constituents deserve and need. And we should be able to talk about the options and whatever service is in there. Right now, we don't know. And we won't know until such is presented. So, I agree with you. But again, today, this is an introduction.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Councilman Harley?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. And I agree with my colleague here from a somewhat of a different perspective. You know, our charges, government, as leaders, we, we vote on these things. Judge clearly told us, you have 12 months to put this thing together. People out there that are looking at us, they said, why are you guys fighting? City council fighting, weeping. Month after month, we asking, where are we with this process? And now? And now, less than 48 hours before March? And what I applaud about this? What I applaud the most about this is the people aren't given a choice. And, and that's, that's just wrong. When the city council has not provided this information, when we're not fighting the directive of a sitting judge who directly told us, when we have a MDEQ pending, a fine pending, and here we are again, the same place we were last year, being goaded into a situation. It is absolutely wrong. Not for the city council, but for our people that we represent, they have no choice, which when you, if, when you don't give a city council a choice, you're not giving your people a choice. And that's wrong, especially in Black History Month. We fought for freedoms. We fought for rights. And now, we have another right being taken away from us. This thing could have been done six, eight months ago and it wasn't. We could have had choices on how to move forward and how to put maybe even RFP out there to get more vendors to get a cheaper price. But no, we've been gored into one corner. And when you do that, you're not just doing it to the city council, you're doing it to the people they represent. And I say, I'm with my colleague here, this is wrong on so many levels and we need to fix this. This is not right. It's not right to give, to take away choice from the people. It, it's just not right. But here we go again. And that's wrong for any type of government. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Vice President Lee?
Also in court, the judge directly told us that we would not find a rate cheaper than Richard's disposal. He implored us to take that offer and we did not. If we do not, let's say Richard's disposal wins the bid and we as a council pass an ordinance saying that they won't be able to pick up garbage, where will that leave the people? We will once again be in another garbage crisis at the expense of the people, because we, as a, as the seven of us, as a body, could not come to a decision again. And I am hoping we are not in that situation again. I do wish we had the opportunity to have been presented the company before March, because my, my other worry is if it is the second vendor that wins the bid, that's not Richard's disposal, will they have enough startup time to begin April 1st? So, there are a lot of things that we as council members have to weigh. But one of the things we cannot let happen is for garbage service to be interrupted April 1st.
Thank you, Vice President Lee. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Stokes, you know, I, I will say respectfully, right now, you know, we know that there are two companies. We don't know what the service is. We don't know what the offers are. We don't know what the cost is. We don't know if they have capacity, if they don't have capacity. It's just a lot of unknowns. And, and the wisdom of, even if we made this decision and there was one left, the problem would be, could they mobilize with the time? Not the time, because this is clearly not our fault. Not this. Not this one. Because we have asked for this over and over and over again since we left court. Every meeting, it's been on the agenda. And so, I think it's made clear, you know, to this last minute, because we don't, we don't know who has the ability to mobilize. And so, at the end of the day, we have to keep, even though we understand that there may be some things that may, that we may disagree with, I think we have to keep the options open so that people won't lose service. The, the main thing that I'm concerned about is, I think we all are, is that there is no longer a disruption in service, because at the end of the day, if that happens, we all failed. And, and so, it is my point to use the wisdom necessary to make sure that that happened. But because you are a member of this body, we accept this as an introduction. We, and, and you have that right to put that forward. And we have that right to deliberate and to talk about it. But at the end of the day, we can't do anything until this administration brings somebody before us. And hopefully, it's enough time for us to present it to the constituents in our wards. And we only have 30 days to do that.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I haven't received anything, so I don't know if two bids or 1,000, but it's been told it's only two bids. Now, if I have on the agenda that we not accept one bidder, then that mean that we have a contract with someone else. We do not have to wait on the mayor to present anything. We would not have to wait. This body make its determination, not the mayor. The mayor cannot vote. He cannot vote on this item. Now, if council members don't want to vote on it, that's, that's them. Or if they voted down, that's them. But we can sit up here and put some foot around with this issue when we know time is running out. And just like you stated, how in the world, at the last minute, you going to say, oh, we gave you this contract? He said, well, how can I go out and make contracts with other companies? I need the contractor. I should have had it months ago. So, what we have to do as the council, put the ball in this man's hand, whoever this vendor in is. And that way, he can start doing a contract, put people and things in place. We can argue with the mayor about it shouldn't have happened later, but we need to make sure that we have someone April 1 picking up. Now, it's going to be a closed vote, but it's going to be a vote that must take place. So, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that as this lady stated today, we ride our wards and look at our trash our wards are. And then think about, was it this bad before Richard's got here? And look at their history. Anything better than this. And we got to give somebody else another opportunity to clean up this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stokes. And, and we'll move on. Let me just say this. I hear you and I hear you loud and clear. I, I will say that wisdom says, all things may be lawful, but all things are expedient. And it, it, so, we have to choose the best expedient choice based on the situation we are in, because nothing has come before us at this time. We don't know exactly who the other vendor is. And I think that before we even make that choice, we need to at least have the opportunity to talk to whom that other vendor is and to explore their capacity so that we can make a wise decision. And so, at the end of the day, Councilman Stokes, people see your effort. I think people see our effort. And I think it is made clear that as of today, March 20, I mean, February 27, knowing that there's expiration coming up, that we have nothing before us to consider and most importantly, take before the people. So, with that being said, Mr. Stokes, we can roll this in committee to have further discussion? Yes. We, we'll just one sec. We could roll this into committee to have further discussion. We can have a discussion in executive session and maybe be briefed by the city attorney's office to, to, to talk about ways that we can move forward, because there are opinions out there on ways that we may can move forward. We can have that discussion or we can wait till it comes up for adoption and have maybe a committee meeting in between. This is your item. I'm giving you that liberty.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I would rather we did not place it in committee.
Okay.
I would suggest that legal talk to each council member individually, either by phone or invited. That way, everyone can have a chance to voice their concern and everything. My concern with legal is not, it's not an indictment on legal, but I suggested before, and I keep suggesting, we need a firm. Legal should have stepped in and been a man and told the mayor something. and been a man and told the mayor something should have been to this body. That's what a legal department should have done, instead of forcing this council to make a decision with a gun put to our head. Our firm would have done that because that firm would have been hired by everyone. And this legal department scared for their jobs, but the citizens are suffering. They know it's too late for us to really do a lot unless we act quickly. But they haven't said anything to, I haven't received anything, I can speak for other council members. They haven't said anything. Kind of legal department is that.
Yeah, well, let, let me just say this further. We, we do have a new city attorney at the helm, and I would like to give him the opportunity before we lay those type of claims, because I do have a lot of respect for Mr. Martin and the staff that's there at this point. Um, so, Mr. Martin, if, if, if you could give the council via email, um, based on this, the options we have, uh, I would be interested to know the option that we may have according to the C J Lawrence opinion, you know, the one I'm talking about? Um, just so that, so that we can know and send that in a memo. And during that time, uh, if there's the need to convene a special meeting to have further discussion, colleagues, we will. Dr. Omar, did you have something?
I just wanted to say that there's been quite a bit of, uh, action on the part of the administration with regards to this situation. We, several months ago, had a solution where a lawsuit would be dismissed, where, uh, our fines with a certain governmental agency would have been mitigated. And we thought we had a vote, and that settlement was backed out of at the last minute by the council. And I'd also like to say that I know that there have been discussions with the council about this current situation. So the representation that nothing has happened on behalf of the administration to resolve this, uh, situation is categorically false. So I don't know how much, uh, that discussion has been disseminated among you council members, but that discussion has happened, and actually, a, a request was made with regards to the situation. So I'm just gonna leave it at that. The administration is not sitting, holding his hand, trying to back the council into a corner as portrayed.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
No, Mr. Stokes, hold on, because I, we, we need to move on. Uh, Dr. Omar, respectfully, and since you opened that, the reason why the council backed out, because, um, one, there was misleading and, um, untruths and misrepresentation of a regulatory office, of the regulatory office to us. There was even a meeting set up, which at the last minute, we found out that meeting was never scheduled. And when we actually went there, what the former city attorney represented to this body, it was told by the people that are in the regulatory action, or they're part of that regulatory committee, that it was never said, and so it was backed out of because the council at that point felt misled. And let me say furthermore, I felt misled because I trusted the advice of what was said. And me and the vice president was there, and we heard those conversations, and we brought that conversation back. And that was the reason. And so at, at the end of the day, there are some things that I think that we can move forward, and I hope we can work to that regard. But at the end of the day, um, you know, the council has to be able to trust this legal advice. And if the person who is the attorney tells us that this regulatory agency is requiring this, and we go to the regulatory agency with that person right there, and they say that was never said, then that brings a problem. And that did, in fact, happen. All right? So we'll move on now, um, to item seventeen, which I believe needs to be amended before we take up claims.
Order authorizing the mayor to terminate the lease agreement for Jackson Police Precinct Four located at fifty eighty Parkway Drive, Jackson, Mississippi, three nine two one one, and to pay the lease termination fee of two thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second. It's been moving properly second on this item. Is, is there an amendment? Okay. So after we approve this, then we need to go and add the item? All right, all right.
Question.
Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you so much, uh, we're gonna terminate this lease. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Are we good now?
You twisted my.
That light deliberation. Any other questions or comments? All the, yes, sir, Councilman.
Uh-oh, Councilman. Well, my question is, this is a lease in Ward One, so I got, I get the question. My question is, when's the expected time of moving Precinct Four out of the current, where their lease is? And, and to move to the new location?
Joseph Wade, Chief of Police, good morning. We anticipate August of this year. This is not something that's gonna happen overnight over the next month. But once we terminate the lease, we anticipate the move to be in August of this year.
Okay, well, I just hope that, uh, as for your commitment to police presence in Ward One won't change at all.
Absolutely, we're gonna definitely maintain a footprint there. One thing we're looking at as well is identifying satellite locations across the city as well. So we'll maintain that footprint, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief, speaking of satellite locations, uh, there, there have been community organizations specifically in South Jackson, Ash Jan, that have been working with the management, and I know Mr. Griselle has been working very hard on the offer of a satellite location at the.
Cash saver.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Yes, I went by there, I looked at the location myself, we actually have the documentation now, so it should be coming before you, probably over the next month.
All right, good deal. All right. Yes, Council, Council, Vice President Lee.
Chief Wade, um, where are we with Northwest Junction? Are we in there temporarily, and then are we gonna move back? Are we gonna be able to have a satellite site there?
That would be a potential satellite location. We were looking at possibly moving there while we were doing some renovations to Precinct Three, but we did not have to make that move, so that's one of the potential location that we're gonna be looking at as a satellite location.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes. Going to get these satellite locations in.
No, I want to talk about, um, um, Chief, the, uh, the item that, that we dealing with today, and sometimes you get the, what's called for sevability. If we don't hurry and pull a police presence on I fifty five, we're gonna lose I fifty five. And we slowly lose, and I, I was, I was at, uh, I think maybe we was here. We brought it up about that Oyo Hotel, homeless in there and doing all kind of things. We gotta get out, off due to officers, and we gotta pay overtime, we gotta clean that up. That lady got a business that she sell to churches and like that, and people scared, and the sewer issue that's above there.
Yes.
It's gonna cross over, and once you lose I fifty five, it's gonna be hard to get it back again because Glove Stack and all these places, they growing. For the first time, I accidentally stumbled upon, in Rankin County, uh, Fed Ex.
You accidentally?
Accidentally, I was business on peeping, that thing is huge.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, without divulging the location or giving the location, because we're still in negotiations, we are looking to move Precinct Four onto that fifty five business quarter.
Try to save these automobile dealerships, because they moving out of here. They going to Glove Stack and everything, that's your tax base. I'm not criticizing no small cars, but the bigger cars.
Money.
That's where you money, and we, once we lose that tax base, it's not coming back.
Absolutely, I concur.
So, you know, for sevability, I, I thank you and the councilwoman for y'all foreseeing what others may not have seen.
Yes.
Because we all one Jackson, and these other areas, they, they be now, as the old folks used to say, they eating our lunch. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, Chief, just, Chief, just one more. Um, since a lot of our, we gotta get you, gotta get a minute.
I was almost gone, huh?
They do have a lot of other items.
I, I know, but just, just real quick, remember back in the day when there used to be a satellite location on Valley Street?
Yes, I remember.
Close to around the Jack State area, especially what's happening right there, and the students, egress, back and forth for Jack State. If we could look at something around the Jack State area.
Will do.
I think that would be good as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's go to claims. I mean, I'm sorry, all in favor? I'm ready to move.
She looked twisted my.
Thank you.
Unanimous, all right. That item passes, now let's go to claims.
Order approving claims appearing at pages two, three, seven, two inclusive their own on municipal docket of claims in the amount of nineteen million, eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, eighty-one dollars and fifty-one cents, for and making appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved. Second.
It's been moving properly second on this item. Um, if, first, before you go over the large items, if you can give us the amendment. Do you have an amendment?
Yes, actually, good morning, Fidelis Malumbeka, CFO. We have, uh, three amendments.
Three.
To, to the docket.
Hold on, let me get my, my. All right.
So the first one is to add a payment of two thousand dollars that was represented in the agenda item, and this payment is made payable to Insight, Insight Group.
And that's for item seventeen?
Yes. Then the second addition is a payment to the National League of Cities. Uh, this is the membership. Uh, it was approved, um, during the last council meeting. Uh, and now they have processed the invoice, uh, it needs to be added to, to the docket.
Are we sure, are we sure none of that is in nine?
Pardon?
Are we sure that none of that is in item nine? Because you have an item that deals with professional dues as well.
No, no, this was the last council meeting, right. Uh, the amount is twelve thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars.
All right, uh, Mr. Malumbeka, if the C A O, CFO or the mayor's office would please, after we paid his right N L C, and update your staff. All right? Yeah, because they have all these staff members who are members that ain't even here no more. And, you know, so if we can get that in together, because that's where the problems run in when it comes to some of our registration, because you're not even registered as a member.
All right, we, we'll do so, thank you. Okay, uh, the third amendment is to remove a payment payable to Mythix in the amount of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-one cents.
And that's to remove?
To remove, yes.
All right.
Payable to Memphis?
Mythix.
Okay.
Right. So thi- this is, um, the subscription that we were utilizing with water sewer billing. Um, when I reviewed the docket, uh, I saw that it was one getting paid out of, um, Fund Thirty-One. We no longer control that fund, uh, we transfer the money to Jackson Water. Um, and also just wanted to understand why it was coming up. Uh, we couldn't get answers right away, and at this point, we need to withhold it uh, until we get a better understanding.
Yes, Councilman Lee.
Are there payments that we made that we need to be reimbursed for?
No, uh, it, it appears, when I looked at it, uh, you know, it might have been one payment that was missed. Um, because it, it had July on there, uh, and we were paying it out of a different fund. Um, and so just to be sure, we need, we needed to hold so we can verify.
Yeah, 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 uh, we shouldn't have to do that anymore. Mythix was responsible for the lift and shift and all of the assimilation concerning the software with the, with the meters, the Siemens meters. And all of that was something that was Bob was trying to handle, so we should all transfer over at this point. All right, so we have two thousand added for item seventeen, twelve thousand added for.
Two, two, one hundred twenty-one.
Twelve thousand.
One hundred twenty-one.
Twenty-one for N L C, and the removal of twenty-four thousand from Mythix.
Twenty-four, eight fifty-six, forty-one.
Twenty-four thousand, eight fifty-six, forty-one.
Question, Mr. President?
Just, can we get a motion in a second, first, then ask questions about it? All right, it's been moving properly second that we amend twelve thousand, I mean, two thousand for seventeen, twelve thousand one twenty-four for N L C, twenty-four, what he said. Yes, sir.
And we're gonna vote.
Oh, all in favor? Other than me. All right, yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, uh, Doc, have you had any conversations with anyone at the state level that descended bill concerning the water once the water is complete?
We got it.
Renovation?
Senate Bill twenty-six, twenty-eight.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. It look like if the bill has been introduced and all those things, someone should have talked to our finance director somewhere down the line or the mayor, someone before they, uh, move at this kind of rate of speed, as, as though this is getting ready to happen. And I just wanted to know, have you had any conversation with anyone at any level?
Uh, Councilman Stokes, unfortunately, no, um, there, there has been no conversation with the administration regarding that bill.
Could you give us a memo as to the effect that this would have on the city of Jackson in terms of the budget, future budgets, uh?
Revenue?
And, um, yeah, in terms of revenue, what it would have in, in terms of, uh, employees and, uh, everything else, how it would affect us long term.
Right.
Not just short term, please.
Yes.
I guess a forecast they would call it.
Correct, we, we'll do so.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, any, any other questions or comments on claims as amended? All right, go over the large claims, Mr. Malumbeka.
Yes, uh, the four largest claims on this docket are as follows. Uh, the first is Jackson Public Schools in the amount of sixteen million, one hundred seventy-six dollars, five hundred fifty, sorry, hundred and six, let me repeat, sixteen million, one hundred seventy-six thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars and nine cents. This is paid out of Fund One, General Fund. Uh, this is for the transfer of public utility taxes due to J P S. The second is Richard's disposal in the amount of eight hundred, eight thousand, thirty-five dollars, paid out of Fund Nine, Landfield Sanitation. This is for the residential service, services for January twenty twenty-four. The third is Hemp Hill Construction in the amount of five hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred twenty dollars and thirty-three cents, paid out of Fund One fifty-seven, one percent infrastructure bond. This is for the Riverside Drive improvements. And the fourth is Entergy in the amount of three hundred sixty-five thousand, forty dollars and sixty cents, paid out of Fund One, General Fund. This is for street lighting. And that's the completion of the four largest claims.
All right, Councilman Harley?
Yes, be, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, before we leave claims, uh, Ms. Malumbeka, you know, I'm concerned with, uh, the loss of, of, of residents and businesses. You know, our big overall picture with our budget. Can you get me some information on how we're looking budget-wise coming into the city versus last year or maybe the year before? Just an overall, overall numbers. And the emphasis here is, we can't afford to lose residents nor businesses. We need that for our tax base. And the services, you know, solid ways, water, everything, well, not, it's not water right now, but solid ways. Everything we do hinges around our ability to bring revenue into the city. So if you could get just a general figures of how, of, uh, the, the correlation with the, uh, with the residence versus, uh, the, the budget.
Yeah, so, and, and primarily, you would be looking at for revenue.
Yes, revenue.
That property taxes, sales tax.
Revenue, yes.
We, we can provide a summary.
I think that's important that we monitor that, and then maybe consider some, uh, some type of strategies in order to, uh, reverse it.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, you're welcome.
All right, any other questions? Yes, Councilwoman Lindsay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Banks. Um, Mr. Malumbeka, is.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Banks, um, Mr. Malinbecker, is this the last payment on the Riverside Drive project, is it nearing the end?
Uh, no, I do not believe this is the last payment, um. So in, in initially, I think there was, uh, for that project, um, the, the obligation, I believe, was, uh, fifteen point five million dollars, uh, it did come in under, um, and, and so we, we have not, uh, uh, completed all the payments for that project, uh, I know Mr. Robert Lee will likely update us, um, they, they had to augment, um, a portion of the project, uh, because Jackson Water has to complete some.
That's right.
Infrastructure there, um, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you, would, would you mind just letting me know where we are on, because the road project is almost finished and we should be at least coming to, toward the end of that, um, so thank you, it just, just, you can just call me.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments on, uh, claims as amended? All right, hearing another, all in favor? Oppose? All right, claim passes for three. There's some history being made up here. Eight. Eight.
Order proving gross payroll including payroll deduction claims number two-nine-nine-two-nine two and making appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
It's been moving properly, second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries. Uh, unanimously, item nine.
Order authorizing Department of Finance and Administration to pay professional association dues and travel-related expenses for various organization, organizations as it, it is reasonable and necessary to the performance of the Department of Finance and Administration duties.
So moved, second. It's been moving properly, second on this item, any questions, yes, sir, Councilman Stokes?
Mr. President, I want to take a second to tell you how important, uh, these trips and, and being able to, uh, associate with people in your, um, way of work, uh, all over the country, um, conversations and the meetings and i- i- it's just something good, I, I wish I could explain it, uh, I won't go to, uh, Washington, I used to look forward to going to Washington in March, but I'm just so proud that other council members are going and meeting people from all over the country and getting idea, sharing knowledge and everything else, you know, lot of times people say, well, you don't need money for that and take that out the budget, i- it need to be in the budget, i- it need, the people got to go, cause some people still think of Jackson Mississippi or the state of Mississippi like we back then, seventeen oh four, you know, you got to meet people and talk to them and, and, and everything else to get some kind of working relationship and, and, and go on and see each other, so, you know, I'm not going on any more trips, I don't foresee in, in my lifetime on this council, but I support those who will go and continue to make this city grow.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna vote in favor of this.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes, any other questions or comments? All in favor? All right, item carries unanimously, uh, item ten.
Order authorizing payment to the Society for Human Resource Management, Public Sector Human Resource Association in the Mississippi of Personnel Administrator for the membership dues for all employees in Department of Human Resources.
So moved. Second. It's been moving properly, second on this item, any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and the same goes, we have a, I believe, a stellar, uh, human resources section, but the, the same thing applies, and that is going out, learning, exchanging information with other folks, and showing what Jackson, Mississippi is all about, uh, as representative of the city, I, I believe it's my duties when I go out to present the best image possible for Jackson, Mississippi, so they, that, you know, folks don't, they're not checking to make sure you got on shoes, you know, they're not checking all this other, look, I wanna, I wanna be the best of the best, and when we step out there, that's what we're showing, especially our H R department, they're, they're just stellar, so hats off, I look forward to supporting this measure, thank you.
All right, thank you, any other questions or comments? All in favor? All right, item carries unanimously, next item?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Morris and McDaniel, Inc. to develop and render online testing and psychological evaluations for the Jackson Fire Department recruit applicants.
So moved, second. It's been moved and properly, second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Passage unanimously, next item?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Morris and McDaniel's to develop and render online testing and psychological evaluations for Jackson Police Department recruit applicants.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving properly, second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order requesting a forty-five day suspension of enforcement of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinance Article Two, Sections eight-six, dash five-one through eight-six, dash six-two, to allow the Jackson Police Department to develop a plan for its enforcement.
So moved, second. It's been properly, second on this item, colleagues, we had a very good discussion on this to give the chief the opportunity to put this plan together so that it can be enforced, uh, uh, according to his intention. Yes, sir, Ms. Stokes?
Thank you. Chief, um. I want to start off by thanking, uh.
Thank you.
Different parts of this city see different things. I live in the part where I see these young people out of control, I live in the part where that your officers deal with and see on a daily basis. I saw a ten, fifteen car chase Saturday night going to Woodville, Wilson, Capitol Police and the shafts and, I, I'm, I'm just telling you, who would endanger people like that? And they chasing, normally, most case, they're gonna be young people, and it's fun to them, they, they, you know, they're, they're not quite mature enough to understand the danger they putting everybody else in. I do want to say this, and I hope we come with a good plan, I want to first say that, um, we all understand, and you were here when we had the curfew. We never put status offenders with curfew violators, and for people to insinuate that was absolutely wrong, we took them right down there to the old youth detention center, and we got people now who still here who worked it and everything, and we would never violate people like that, but for the hell judges and other say misinformation like that, that's what lead the state to creating these other judges, they need to stop putting this out, because the state of Mississippi is serious about fighting crime in Jackson. And if they feel that we're not gonna do it, then they gonna do it, we got to get a handle on our young people. I had, uh, a young man, Chief, and I'm, I'ma leave it alone, but I just want to say something about your officers, they want to talk to these police officers from Jackson as though they're second-class citizens. Uh, they threatened a young, an older man from Bolton, told him that if he get out his car, they were gonna kill, no, if he crank his car, they were gonna kill him, this man almost seventy-five, eighty years old. The Jackson Police Department came there, and in that situation, they arrested the, the young people, and I'm saying that because you got good officers.
Yes.
We got to bag them, there was, uh, Corporal Jeffrey Dotson, Officer Hubert, I don't want to mess up a name, maybe Angen.
Hubbard.
Angenita Hubbard, and Officer Linton Bird, we want to thank them.
Yes.
Because we can't keep giving in to these young thugs that think that they run this city, they do what they want to, especially in these older neighborhoods, cause they got the old people scared.
Yes.
I went to a man house yesterday morning, first thing, they got a ton of ties back here, he just getting out of prison, old ladies back there, church people scared, I take you back there, next day or so, but I want to thank you and your police department.
Yes.
For your hard work, cause you, you don't hear that enough, you, you abuse one person, they make it like all your bad, but how many abuse y'all?
Yes.
And you need to stop taking that abuse too.
Thank you, uh, Joseph Wade, Chief of Police, I want to thank you and thank all the council, uh, members and the administration for your continued support of the Jackson Police Department, and I do agree with using the curfew as a tool, as an intervention, prevention and diversion program, so allow us the opportunity to build this program out, we also have other youth programs, our PAL program, we got forty young men in that program, those are forty young men you don't have to worry about committing status offense or criminal offenses, we're planning a huge production the fir-, the week of spring break for good kids in our community at the convention center, thanks to the administration.
Talent show?
You talent show, exactly, called Jackson Police Department Presents the Show, right, we want to celebrate our great kids in our community who are doing the right thing, so we're very excited about that, huge production, all right?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President.
All right, thank you, uh, hearing another, all in favor? All right, item passes unanimously, next item?
Order authorizing the payment of the sum of a hundred dollars, which includes a fifty-dollar late fee to the Mississippi Board of Pharmacy for the renewal of the Jackson Police Department Crime Laboratory's registration to handle controlled substances for the period January first, twenty-twenty-four, through de- through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving properly, second on this item, are there any questions or comments?
Mr. President, why, why can't we have our own crime lab like we used to have?
I think that that is the plan, uh, between Chief Griselle and, uh, uh, Chief, uh, Wade, they're gonna give us at some point, uh, the budget information to, to deal with and to get AFIS back, uh, and all of that kind of stuff, Mr. Griselle, that's still eh, within the plan for you all to present at some point, right?
We going back to the days having our own crime lab?
Vincent Griselle assisted chief, some of the stuff on the crime lab, we cannot process, has to go through the state, um, your blitz is on your firearms, um, your autopsy report, everything, some has to flow still through the state.
Now, when I got lost in Rankin County and found FedEx, I found the crime lab for the state.
Yes, sir.
Just a few block down, so if they don't think I'm in Rankin County, Washington, what's going on there?
I, I hope, I hope while you in Rankin County, they don't throw stick, stones and bottles at you. I, I, I hope they don't throw stick, stones and, and bottles, all right, any other questions? All in favor? All right, uh, I, yes, yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
Patricia Barnes with the Jackson Police Department Crime Lab.
Push.
I'm sorry, Patricia Barnes with the Jackson Police Department Crime Lab, so we do have a crime lab that's, uh, located five fourteen Court Street, but we are limited in some of the, um, the services that we can provide at this time, so that's what we're, uh, working on, uh, right now, trying to get those services such as instrumentations that we need to do what, um, is necessary to, for example, um, examine controlled substances, uh, those substances that are, um, uh, submitted by our law enforcement for analysis, so we are in the process at this time trying to get those, uh, particular services available for the city of Jackson.
Thank you.
All right, Chief, Chief Griselle, as far as AFIS is concerned, um, could the one we had be updated, or we need a whole new one?
You know, technology change, so.
Okay, we need a whole new one.
Yes, sir.
All right, when, when, so that's gonna be part of presentation whenever y'all get all that information?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, any other questions or comments, that, I just called for the vote again since they was talking, all in favor? All right, item passing naturally, next item?
Order revising the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four municipal budget for the City of Jackson Police Department.
So moved. It's been moving properly, second on this item, any questions or comments? We fine, okay, uh, let me just say, I did call after we have our, uh, Public Works meeting, I did tell the clerk to go ahead and called immediately after a joint Legislative and Finance Committee meeting, uh, one, um, I am reluctantly, but I'm going to support, um, deal with this coming from, uh, all because, not because I don't want to make sure police get, but because we're fishing in the dark, and we have to, I was just looking at some statutes and looking at how far out of compliance we are with our audit, and we're about to be out of compliance with twenty-three, this is twenty-four, and twenty-two is not completed, and so we have to come up, I talked to the city attorney this morning, we have to come up with the final solution tomorrow and get this audit done, uh, before the council begins to get fined, okay, so we need to do that, because by state statute, that is the council's responsibility, uh, and I know that we can say, well, but again, it's on us, so that's the reason why I'm calling, because we have to get this audit done, and just spending money out of fund balance without having that audit is not wise, uh, but, um, I want to make sure that J P D gets what they need, all right, any other questions or comments? Hearing another, all in favor? All right, item carries unanimously, next item?
Order accepting Collogic LLC proposal for public safety software, computer aided dispatch, reckless management system, fire services, jail management systems, and mobile field reporting system for the City of Jackson, R F P number two-zero-eight-five-seven-dash-zero-nine-zero-five-two-three, and authorizing the mayor to execute a software as a service agreement with Collogic LLC.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving properly, second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Councilman Banks.
I'm sorry, yes.
There is an amendment to this item.
Talk to me.
And the it is therefore ordered, instead of reading Jackson Fire Department, it should read Jackson Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, so it's been moving properly, second, uh, that we changed according to the statement of the clerk, uh, all in favor? All right, uh, amendment passes, now we had the item on the floor as amended, all in favor? All right, item carries unanimously, all right, thank you, item seventeen was done, item eighteen?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the financing agreement, C J K dash zero-zero-one, payment schedule document with Huntington Finance related to the financing of the purchase of body worn camera, in-car cameras, equipment and cloud storage for Metric Solutions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved properly, second on this item, any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Ms. Stokes?
Could, Chief, could we get one day a memo or something, letting us know, uh, uh, the success of these body cameras and, and, uh, the whole technology that being utilized with the cameras and everything, we haven't heard anything as to whether it's successful, not successful, uh, or things of that nature.
Yes, sir.
Some kind of report to, uh, let us know, um, compared to other cities and everything else.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, any other questions or comments, colleagues, all in favor? All right, item carries unanimously, next item?
Order approving payment of invoices to Morrison McDaniel, Inc. for psychological evaluations received by the Jackson Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving properly, second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the master lease purchase agreement with Huntington Technology Finance based upon its merger with Huntington National Bank effective January one, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving properly, second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order authorizing procurement of services.
Oh, oh, oh. Wait, twenty-one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead.
Order authorizing the procurement of services and executions of an agreement from Protocol nine-one-one LLC to provide I A E D forty-hour basic instruction course to ten communications clerks.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving properly, second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Uh, item carries unanimously, item twenty-two has been pulled, item twenty by the administration, item twenty-three?
Order ratifying and authorizing Department of Information Technology to procure a one-year lease for the Microsoft Office three-sixty-five teams license from Metric Solutions LLC.
So moved, second. It's been moving properly, second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order requesting approval, approval of future professional lighting and sound control services from and payment to the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees, Local five-eight-nine for stage lighting and sound control services for praise and explosion and flipping out, tumbling. for praise and explosion and flipping out tumbling events for the Parks and Recreation Department on March second, twenty twenty four, and April twenty twenty four.
So move.
Second.
It's been moving properly second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item.
Order declaring parcel number seventy-one dash twenty-seven as surplus property and authorizing the mayor to execute the sale contract, deed of conveyance, and other documents necessary to sell said property to Derek Stribling.
So move.
Second.
It's been moving properly second on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir, Ms. Stokes.
Uh. Who do we ask in there?
Just right here is uh.
Uh, what is it gonna?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Hey, Big, yeah.
Vic Sexton, I'm the outreach coordinator of the City of Jackson.
What's the plans for this property, Vic? What's the plans for this property?
The neighbor, uh Derrick Stribling, he has a cafe there and he, it's a adjoining lot. And he's going to uh create a shed to sell snow cones to the neighborhood children.
You gonna stop by and get some?
It's, tell, tell them where it is.
It's on any nine hundred blocks of Fortification Street. The name of the business that he already has established is Tina's Midtown Cafe. You might be familiar with councilman.
Yeah, over that bridge, right?
Correct.
Yeah. You go that way, take a look. Mortification. Motorcycle.
Oh, okay.
Councilman Hartley.
Yes, Mr. Sexton, uh, so do you reto- bre- excuse me? Do you routinely uh do things like this for us? Uh, find uh or have certain parts of property that people are looking to put businesses and stuff in? Is, would you routinely do like this?
Oh, yeah, we we're becoming aggressive, more aggressive in giving these surplus property uh parcels out to the public. You'll hear something soon about uh aggressive efforts through our website and through Facebook and other mediums to make sure that our, the public is aware of these properties out there and we need to put them in a situation where we earn any tax dollars on them.
Okay, are there any type of public meetings or anything like that that that's part of your procedures?
Yeah, there will be some public meetings um set up. And I'm not actually administering the program now, but uh I do know that some things coming is going to be, we're going to be more aggressive and uh be out there making sure that the public knows these properties are available.
Okay, and then surrounding communities. What I'm getting to is basically it's, I think it's in our best interest if uh once the city is giving away a surplus property and uh perhaps there may be zoning issues or other issues that the community need to be aware of. And for us to do that out, that, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have. We're gonna create the full gamut of information to make sure they are aware of everything that's possible.
Please, and you can copy anything in my word, please copy.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Can I have a question?
Councilman Foot. Thank you, Mr. Sexton, on the um, we're aware of all the properties that the state has for tax forfeited. Of these properties, do you have a a number on how many properties the city has that that we can, you know, sell here like this?
I I don't, uh, but we certainly can get an update, uh, get updated information to all of you.
I mean, that'd be very helpful to me, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Stokes.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Sexton, um, over the years, City of Jackson used to be um in the development ballgame. And I know it might not be your area any longer, but to have ten billion dollars to come into this area in Jackson, not to have any thing located in Jackson. I know they come to two twenty.
Yeah.
About two blue right here at the outskirts of Jackson. Are we in conversations with developers and these companies any longer? Or what do we need to do to get back in the ballgame?
Well, we are making the best effort, I'll put it like that. Uh, Mike Davis is uh in uh Yeka Hoover, our director, Mike Davis is over uh the development in our area. So he's just taking on that task and uh he's doing some things uh from a techn- technological standpoint that I think will uh be fruitful, but it's gotta take some time. We we kind of stagnate on it. We haven't done the best we could do, but we're being extremely aggressive now with the technology and uh make, reaching out to these different um to resources throughout the country.
You know, a hundred years ago, we were going to do something with Ferry Street. And it's, it still look the same, except the poles falling down.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely. So, yeah, you're right, I I can't, I can't uh deny that. So, but but we're trying uh to, uh, as I said, be aggressive. And so I think you'll hear some things with Mr. Davis and uh Yeka Hoover, who's only been in there about maybe uh a year, if that long. So I'm I'm very impressed with some of the things and some of the ideas they have. Uh, we hate that we're losing Chloe Dotson because she has a development background, but I think we can kind of pick up the ball that she started or running with and carry on.
Can we not join with Heinz County? That's how Clinton.
Well, they, they work.
They're in the state development. The county did most of it, can we?
Well, Mike has um developed a strong relationship with.
Councilman Stokes? Can I, can I speak on behalf of Vic, uh Chloe Dotson, Director of Planning? Vic primarily deals with the surplus property and the the outreach. Um, there's a lot of working pieces. One thing that we put together was, now that we have our business licensing uh uh program running um and generating revenue, we've put together several programs. One of it, uh, one of them is a business retention plan. Uh, we've partnered with Heinz County Economic Development Authority. We're working with JRA. We're working with the um the MDA as well, a a group of entities to try to not only bring in businesses, but retain businesses. For example, um us working to try to get, you know, another grocery store um when Food Depot moved out, right? So we've been reaching out and we're layering in our CDBG funds and any other funds that we get from NLC or from other entities that we partner with. And I just wanted to make a correction that we are not giving away property. There is a surplus property uh process and it, and and that conveyance of that property um could go certain different ways depending on the status of that entity. For nonprofits, for private entities, um, there's different statuses. So I just wanted to say that we, we're not giving out property or city-owned property. There's about two hundred properties that are, that we think um will do great for residential and commercial development, and those are the ones that we have um put into our website. And those are the the ones that we're going to be hosting these community meetings and doing the efforts that Vic was talking about to get that information out to the community. In addition, um Councilman Foot, we do, you know, we, we're not in the process for state-owned property, but we do provide the technical assistance needed if those, um, if we have residents that are interested in purchasing state-owned property.
Can we have a working relationship with the banks? There's no way this development coming this close to Jackson. These banks don't know about it, uh.
We, we do have.
Before time, and and that's why I was talking to Vic for a missed relation with bank. We got to get in the ballgame and that's, we, we're not in the ballgame right now. I'm not saying we can't get in there, but we got to do some things to change uh what's taking place with these surrounding counties and cities in Jackson so that we become in the know so when this development take place, you know, they don't come to our front door, but don't come into Jackson.
Yeah, it's, it's incumbent enough to have a strong relationship with the banking community. I certainly agree with you there. And um myself and several other employees and people throughout the city, uh whether it be just employees in other departments, we, we need to make those connections. If we don't have them already, but we do, for my area, uh, we have strong connections with bankers. We just got to kind of hone in and make sure that we utilize those relationships.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Councilman Hartley?
Yes, I'm not sure if Director Dotson or or Vic, if you can handle this, which area it lies in. But uh one of my questions is, you know, when a business is coming to look at establishing in Jackson and they uh they may choose not to, do we have any process where we go through a feed, a feedback section, uh, a program or process where we can understand what is turning businesses away? Is there any kind of feedback loop? Do we ever reach out, back out and said, hey, okay, you decided on the location? Tell us a little bit about what you uh, what you found in Jackson that really didn't meet your needs? Or, I mean, we need that type of feedback so we can fix some things and work towards uh attracting more and more business and residents, actually.
Well, Mike Davis handles the retention and also the aggressive marketing of our city. And so I can't answer that uh directly. Chloe may can handle that more so than I can.
The answer is yes, Chloe Dotson, Director of Planning, we do reach out and get feedback. It's a, it's a part of the retention plan.
Do you uh, what type of feedback are we getting? And I reason I.
Crime, wa- uh water issues, sewer issues, trash, homelessness.
Don't say trash.
Okay, well, okay, so we got a lot to work on, you know, to uh get, attract more businesses and to bring in that revenue.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Ms. Dotson, I I hate that you leave. And I want to say that on the record, uh, I have appreciated working with you and talking to you, and you come to community meetings and everything. It was just a trust uh element that you brought to the table. You never had arrows or act funny with anybody when you come in my war. You then, some people act like, you know, that they better than people. You never act like you were better than anybody. You treated everybody with respect and dignity. So I'm, I hate that you're going, I don't know where you're going. Uh, I would hope you're considered staying.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes.
I second that, and it's probably third, fourth, fifth, sixth, or seventh. Uh, all in favor? All right, uh, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Mississippi Department of Finance and Administration regarding demolition and or removal of blighted properties in the City of Jackson and in Mississippi House of Representative District seventy-one pursuant to House Bill six oh three of the twenty twenty-three regular legislative session.
So move.
Second.
It's been moving properly second on this item. Yes, yes, Councilman.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Representative Ronnie Crude up so much for, excuse me, working hard to get these funds for us. I think there, this, this money, I think, can be spent in as many as four wards because this district straddles all of us. And so I want to thank him and I, I encourage other members of of the legislature to follow his lead and and do the same. So thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Lee.
Well, it does not come into war too, so Representative Chris Bell, Justice Gibbs, Senator Horn, I'm calling you out.
All right, Councilwoman Hartley?
Yes, and uh, you know, it was, uh, last night I had a chance to speak with Representative uh Grace Butler, uh, Washington. And uh, and basically called her out at a meeting, at a community meeting, and she said that she is pursuing the same thing. Uh, and so it's uh, and I'm not sure what all areas, which are wards are, are involved. But uh, I think now is the time. Look, you know, looking back on some information provided by Mr. Mellon Becca, we only have something in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand dollars to tear down and abolish houses and stuff. And when a one single representative can get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh for just an area, and we only have, it, it shows, number one, it shows the importance of reaching out and getting that money and that we can. And also, it shows that we could, we have to reconsider the amount we have allocated for those uh abandoned properties and overgrown lots. We have to do better. This is a big thing, and if we can constantly lose residents and business because of this condition, we're losing money, and if we lose that money, we can't provide the services that people are asking for. So I applaud again Representative Crude up and uh and have high hopes for uh Representative Washington. And uh, and so we can move on here. Doesn't have to be competitive, but we all focused on the same thing, and that is cleaning up our communities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
From reading this, it's three years suspended, right?
Yes, sir, that's, that's, that's my understanding.
Yeah, three years suspended, so.
The, the, so let, let me say this. This is authorized the mayor to execute a MOU. The MOU hadn't been drafted yet, so uh, has it? No. Yeah, they gotta do all, the MOU is going to dictate how this will all happen, correct, Chloe?
Quarter of a million?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, so, you know, as, this will be guidance to how this can work uh once, once they get together and put this MOU together. Uh, and I believe that, would that MOU have to come back before us?
That's Chloe Dotson, Director of Planning, that's one answer I am not sure of. This is my first time going through um a house bill allocation.
Yeah, I believe so. Once they agree to the MOU, because this is, it has to come back to us once he agrees to it, all right? All right, so we'll, we'll get a chance to see what, what the agreement is. And I would say if there's any concern of how this is navigated, that you go ahead and email Chloe Dotson or her designate now so that uh she can begin to have those things in the forefront of her mind as they, as they move forward. All right? Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item.
Order amending the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget of the Department of Public Works Solid Waste Division.
So move.
Second.
It's been moving properly second on this item. Eh, what's the question? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Wright, what's included in this?
This is Louis Wright, CAO. This um is uh just moving some budget dollars around so that uh Solid Waste can have the funds to rent the equipment in order to establish this new sale at the rubbish center.
The reason I ask, um, there was a police chase on Crawford Street, and they ran into the barricade. And they're saying they can't replace the barricade because the city Public Works Department uh does not have money. Could we get that barricade replaced?
Okay.
At um Crawford and Powers to, at the dead end, and we had to move none around? Could we do that also? Uh, it's gonna save us lawsuit wise because if you keep going through that barricade or through where there's no barricade, you into Town Creek.
Right. You said it's on the corner of, what was Crawford and what street?
Powers, it's the closest, but it's right there at Town Creek.
Okay, all right, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Uh, yes, com-
Uh, along this, the level of this sale, uh, what are we talking, excavation equipment uh and so forth? Uh, and do you know the completion date of that sale?
I do not know the completion date.
Okay, uh, that.
This is just the move of money so that we can start renting those equipment to establish this new sale.
Okay, and I think it's very important. Uh, actually, I was working on the same sale ten years ago. But right now, the capacity of our rubbish site is, is, is way up there. And uh, we, we desperately need that. I hope there's no problems with MDEQ uh moving forward and, and we getting the right permitting and, and certifications for it. But it's, it's really important that we keep that landfill vital. It's a, it's a big asset to the city, and the development that sale should be very, very uh important. As well as, do you know if there's any movement on getting a scale out at the landfill?
We are working on the scale and the pavement process. All of those factors are, we're, we're working on them.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Councilwoman Lee.
Ms. Weathers, you are doing so much, and I know you are fed up having to go back and clean up areas where we're having a lot of illegal dumping. Do we have enough equipment for you to do your job? And do we only have one truck working? And what can we do if we're doing budget amendments? What can we do to help you?
Vice President Lee, now that we know we got five point eight million dollars, uh, oh, now it's four point four. No, okay. I mean, if, 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 if there is, because that's important, right? And that, that's the reason why we want to know what their overage is in fund balance. Because if we can allocate seven hundred thousand dollars right now to give her what she needs to do what she need to do, then why we waiting? All right, so we just need to know. Tell us what you need.
Say your name.
Your, your name's.
Good enough, good enough.
Thank you. Lakeisha Weathers, Solid Waste. Uh, Mr. Wright has been provided with that information. He's working with Mr. Mellon Becca to get all of that um situated for Solid Waste. Currently, yes, we do have one truck. We are in the process of bidding out to purchase another. We are in the process of bidding out to purchase another truck for this fiscal year. It would be another boom truck. We're looking to get one of larger capacity so it can hold more material.
What about claw trucks?
That is the boom truck.
That's the boom truck, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Weathers, for all that you do. I know I call on you day and night. I appreciate you and your staff.
Day and night. But we thank you.
Time seven, Councilwoman Stone. Thank you. Off of Houston Collins Lane. You can hardly tell the street runs off Marloth King. They have dumped tires. It's not but three houses on the whole street behind that last house. I was gonna take the chief by there. Then on Hollinsworth, they had blocked the street with tires. Now, one gentleman stopped and I was just in a hurry, didn't get his name. He said he called the police and told who's driving that U-Haul. They supposed to be in U-Haul. Getting these tires and dumping them and everything. I saw a young man, I'm maybe I'm getting paranoid, getting in a U-Haul off Maple Street yesterday, last night. Well, you don't see a U-Haul Maple Street at night unless something wrong going on. Nobody moving at night. So we are on the lookout for these U-Hauls for them dumping and those things, these tires. I know it's a hard job. Just, just keep hanging in there with it. Keep telling us what you need because sooner or later, we'll stop it. Because there was a time in this city, we didn't have all these tires being dumped.
No, and, and thank you for letting me know. We'll add that to the list. So we're picking up bulk illegal dump sites for tires. We're doing that mainly on Wednesdays now, trying to put it all on one day so we can focus on removing other items within the city. So we will add this one to the list to get it picked up. Also, we are having another tire amnesty day in April. We just had one in February. It wasn't as, we didn't have the participation I would have liked to see. But I think if we start hitting it now and getting the advertisement out early for April, then I'm hoping that that will increase the participation for the residents, for the residents of Jackson.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President. Yeah, no problem. Ms. Stokes, Councilwoman Hartley?
Yes, that tire amnesty day, do you have a date for that?
No, we have not set an exact date because we have several activities planned for March. All I can say is that we're planning it for April.
And I, and I agree. I think we can just.
What we normally, what we did last time, we did it the same day as roll off. So anticipating, we may do it this way, the same way this time. And we'll have roll off and tire amnesty on the same day.
Okay, a couple of things. One, Washington addition, we're probably doing a tire cleanup this, this Saturday, this coming Saturday. You know, and picking up tires. So we'll have a, a whole trailer full of tires to drop off till you. Eastview, street over Damp Country Park neighborhood. I've been working on that. And I know that you guys are strapped. I should have about 40% cleaning up that property now. I should have it done by next week. Okay? And if you don't mind, have your folks come there, pick up the trash that's piled up. And when we finish, pick up some tires as well.
Okay, Per Country Park.
Per Country Park, Eastview. Eastview Extension. Other thing is working on a, on a litter ordinance in coordination with our Clerk of Counsel. Hopefully, we can have that out by mid, mid March. And I think that may have a significant impact on litter. And this final question, how is our tire recycler doing, the one that we use?
Mississippi Tire? They're doing great. You talking about the company or the program?
Yeah.
Or both?
The, the company.
The company is doing great.
They were transferred from one location to another.
Yes.
How are they doing?
He's doing great.
Good.
He's up and running, active Monday through Thursday. He's not open on Fridays. I'm not sure about Saturday, but he's doing good.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, this is still item 27, right?
Yep.
All right. All in favor? All right, item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with New Way Mississippi, Inc. for services for litter removal from public right of ways in the city of Jackson.
So.
Second.
It's removal property second on this item. As, as this goes on, first of all, let me just say, for those that don't know, that New Way actually helps with those that may be coming out of system being just basically recidivism, bringing them back into the community. And they're hiring those that may have a hard time getting a job. And we appreciate what they do. And sometimes they go over and beyond the call of just doing regular litter. And so I appreciate you working with them. I think the biggest problem, I want to bring up two situations. First of all, I want to say publicly that I appreciate you because every time there's a call about Glen Aaron, you get it cleaned up. And sometimes citizens don't understand the cost that is associated when you clean up that amount debris. Because as soon as we clean it up, three days later. It's back out there again. And so with Glen Aaron, legal, if you can look into this, what can we do? There's nothing on that street but trash. To barricade and look into closing that street. If, if we can look into that. And then if, if temporarily, if the council can take some type of action to give the authority to go ahead and barricade it off. The other thing is on McRaven Road, this was on the news some time ago. It's right across from Bishop Coleman Son Church. Right there where that underpass is, where they dump the couches. It's, it's almost the same situation, but they dump a bunch of, you know what I'm talking about now? Yeah, they dump a bunch of couches, they dump furniture, all that kind of stuff. And, and there are a lot of hotspots like that. And again, the issue is, after you clean it up, it comes right back. And, and so the enforcement and the prevention legal, I think is gonna be very, very important. Now, we did make a request, I believe, Mr. Griselle, correct me if I'm wrong, for there to be cameras in hotspots where littering was too. And, and so we, to, with JPD is concerned, we need that as soon as possible. And if JPD can coordinate with Solid Waste on where those hotspots are and if we can get those cameras up as soon as possible. Council, I mean, Vice President Lee.
I did speak with JPD yesterday, and they are looking at our hotspots and are thinking about putting up those deer cameras and making sure that they have something in place so they can capture. We will not disclose those areas, but they are thinking about that.
They still the camera.
All right, Councilman Griselle?
I just want to say I asked for that two years ago.
Well, we met with Chief Wade Staff, his commanders. And they are actually starting a community patrolling program for this. Because what we're finding is people are not waiting till 2:00 in the morning to dump anymore. They're dumping in the middle of the day. So we are appreciative of them, we're working with us to patrol these areas where we know that they are dumping in the middle of the day. Glen Aaron, I think we can name one or two streets in everybody's ward that is inundated with trash. And I thank you all for recognizing that we pick it up. Because we do, we pick it up. And I promise you, before we leave off the street, they're right back. It's not two days later, it's the same day. They're waiting for us to clear these spaces just so they can dump.
To make room.
And so it's, it's, it's taxing. And you don't want to block off all your streets in your city, right? So we have to come up with another solution as well. Blocking off some areas is good, but you don't block off a lot of your streets in Jackson if that's the case. Hilda is one, Glen Aaron is one, Moonbeam is one. So you have several streets where they're just coming in and it's an open dump. And then in regards to New Way, yes, New Way is using those individuals, as you stated. New Way is doing a great job. And it's the same way with them. They go into these areas, they do litter removal, and it's like they were never there. So we gotta do something to change the mindset of our people. And that helps with the legal dumping as well as the litter in the city of Jackson. So, you know, we, we had a campaign last year, Stop Trashing Jackson. We're getting ready to start a new one this year to talk to the residents. So it's just a matter of getting people to think about what they're doing to their own communities. But New Way is working very hard to remove the litter from our city right of ways. And we appreciate their work.
All right, Vice President Lee, then, Councilwoman Hartley.
I also just want to state with my meeting with the, with JPD, they do plan on coming before us to tell us that they want to have an officer dedicated just for illegal dumping.
Outstanding. Go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Ms. Weathers, the agenda item. We are in fact increasing the amount of folks that would be a part of this?
Yes, we're adding, I believe, three or four new, more people.
Excellent.
So that way, I'm hoping that we can have two crews in two different areas of the city.
Outstanding. And residential areas, are they going into residential areas as well?
They are not going into residential areas. We are focusing on the major thoroughfares through the city. If we have areas within the city, within communities or within the neighborhoods that need attention, we send our staff just to see what it is. Now, we're not going down the street doing piece by piece litter pickup, but there are some streets within the neighborhoods where there are large bulk items or piles and trash like that or things that need to be addressed. But door to door, house to house litter pickup on the roads, we're not doing that.
So you ain't just encouraged our community cleanup operations?
Yes, we encourage in community cleanups, absolutely.
One other thing, I hope that it'd be somewhere on the list. I did a video, Facebook post, hey, looking, asking for community groups to come out. Holland Drive between Lynch and Raymond Road. Folks turn that curve, and as you know, a lot of folks find a curve, that's where, that's where they litter. A lot of times, the curve starts there, then it's further down the road. But could you put that on the list as, as an area? I know it's not a residential area, but it's a highly traveled area.
Yeah, we'll add that because we're doing the pickup on Lynch with the tires behind the metro. So we'll just address that area while we're there.
Thank you. Someone mentioned that this past weekend.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, yes, clerk.
Shanniki Jordan, Clerk of Counsel. According to the city's Attorney's Office, we have an amendment to change 13 throughout the document, the number of laborers, to 10. And in the, it is therefore ordered March 1st, 2023 to 20, 2024.
So move an amendment.
Second.
All right, it's removal property second on the amendment as stated by the Clerk of Counsel. Any question? Yes, Councilwoman Lee, Vice President Lee.
So the, the price went up $100,000. I thought it was because we were getting more laborers. So now we're down to 10.
So we may need to table and ask Terry about it because there's a little confusion here. And you may know the answer too. The agreement under the memorandum of understanding, well, it's not an MOU, but the memo says there will be 10 laborers and the contract begins March of 2024. Okay. And in the, and in the, and in the order, it's inconsistent. Like the fourth whereas says 10 and then it has 13 in parentheses. So I think we need to get some clarification before we vote on it, to be honest.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
You think it's supposed to be 13?
Yeah, but yesterday in executive session, they said they had more workers.
It's definitely supposed to be more, that's my understanding.
So, because I'm wondering, is it gonna be two crews of five if it were 10?
You're sure? Go ahead.
I am positive that it's 13 laborers, okay? And I cannot say whether it'd be five and five. It depends on the severity of the area. So I can't give you, say, oh, there's gonna be a crew of five here and a crew of five there. There are 13 laborers, they added three.
I resent my second.
I withdraw.
In that case, what the amendment should be then is on the fourth whereas the, the, the word 10, T E N, should be changed to the word 13. And in the last whereas, can stay as it is. And then in the, it is therefore ordered, should still be changed to 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All right, the first, the first motion and withdrawal had, I mean, second had been withdrawn. The new amendment on the table is according to the city attorney. All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Now we have the item on the floor as amended. Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilwoman Lee.
Ms. Weathers, do you give them the locations where to go?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So the only other thing legal, if we can look at this, just an idea that popped in my head. If we can find a way to suspend any contractor from doing business in the city that dumps in this city. So any contractor that after they finished working on a house, go dump their shingles on McRaven Road or Hilda Road.
Everywhere.
That they be suspended from doing business with the city, especially if they get caught with dump, you know, when they get caught dumping.
They'd have to be caught. You want something in the form of like an ordinance?
Yes, and it might could be, it might can be in addition to whatever Councilman Hartley's working on.
Well, mine is specifically targeting littering.
Okay. Yours is littering. So this would be illegal dumping at contractors. If we can get something like that and put all seven of us as a sponsor. All right, all right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? All right.
Unknown, Mr. President.
All right, all opposed, one. So six to one. All right, next item.
Order authorizing the rental of equipment to address the stockpiling of debris at the municipal rubbish facility development of the permitted sale extension.
So move.
Second.
It's removal property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing payment to the Mississippi State Department of Health, Boiler and Pressure Vessel Safety Branch for inspection fees.
So moved.
Second.
It's removal property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two final to the Contract of Fordice Construction Company Incorporated, authorizing release of retainage, publication of notice of completion and commencement of one-year warranty for the McRaven Road Bridge Project, State Project Number ERBR-2504.
So move.
Second.
It's removal property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, supporting the commitment of Central Mississippi Realtors fostering a thriving real estate environment in Jackson, Mississippi.
So move.
Second. It's removal property second on this item. College, just to give an explanation, Central Mississippi Realtors is a group that helps foster and try to find financing and funding for real estate investment for housing, for housing. And they have identified some possible partnerships through different funding opportunities and also state opportunities for each and every one of our wards, especially with scope, with, with properties that, you know, have been, you know, vacant for a long time. And this resolution is basically just to give to them so that as they go to meet with whomever may be a funding mechanism, say that the city of Jackson is on board and supporting this effort of investment. So I appreciate your support. All in favor? All right, item carries unanimously. Yes.
I just want to recognize these three students from, looks like Hartfield Academy here. Looks like they've been taking notes during our meeting. If you would stand up and just kind of tell us who you are and what you're doing.
My name is Gavin Patrick and our teacher for our dual credit political science class, which is a dual course of dedication. Our assignment is to write out one and a half page of paper about.
Good choice.
You got plenty of content.
My name is Max Matthew, and it's pretty much the same thing. I'm just senior at Hartfield. We're just completing an assignment, sort of last minute, but you know.
My name is Nathan Pritchett, and I'm doing the same thing as both of them.
Well, welcome, all of you. That's a, that's amazing, a dual credit in political science when you're in high school. That's awesome.
Wow. Councilwoman Hartley?
Yeah, one question, what do you think? Give us some feedback.
Might not have time.
A quickie.
Go ahead.
Feedback.
I have a feedback on the, feedback on the meeting?
Yeah.
I thought, I mean, it was definitely a lot more interesting than I thought it would be.
I bet.
I like how y'all like to keep it short on the stuff that maybe is, I mean, to put it plainly boring. I mean, and, you know, I like how y'all like to focus on stuff that really is important, so.
Yes, yes.
Well, thank y'all for being here today.
Thank you.
Can you get them to turn around so they can get them on the camera?
Thanks, you guys.
All right, yeah, thanks.
Sort of the same thing Max said. Um, sort of the same thing Max said. Um, I enjoy the discussion y'all have. It's a lot better than listening to zoning for two hours straight. Um, a lot more engaging and you get to hear different perspectives on different points and it's really fun.
What he said. Thank, thank you all so much and, uh, Vice President Lee, appreciate you for recognizing them. All right, any, uh, anything else? All right, let's go to discussion. Thank you, guys. Yes, there's an emergency item. Um, I, I, I will, I will allow, since I do not know as much, for a brief explanation because we don't have any in front of us, but if you could give us a brief explanation about this emergency item and then, um, we could take a motion and a second to add this.
Sure. Drew, Drew Martin, city attorney. Uh, this is an order, the only reason that it's an emergency is to get it on the timing. Get some feedback here, I'm sorry. Um, the council previously had a straw vote, uh, where we discussed resolving the MDQ litigation through an agreed order and with the fine that I previously, uh, briefed the city council on. Uh, I signed that agreed order on behalf of the city. One, after I signed it, MDQ raised an issue. Apparently they'd had something in the past where a city attorney had signed an agreed order and the municipality then said, uh, that they weren't going to be bound by the city attorney's signature. And so they wanted to make sure this was an official action by the governing authorities. So this is an order that, that just has the council ratify my signature on the MDQ agreed order. We've included the agreed order, uh, with the information that's been copied for the council. And the details of the agreed order are also spelled out in the whereas paragraphs of the order itself.
All right, uh, council, before we have the conversation, we need a motion a second to get this added to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved a proper second that, um, we add order ratifying the city attorney's execution of an agreed order with the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality related to alleged violations of Mississippi Code annotated section seventeen dash seventeen dash five, seventeen dash seventeen dash two two seven and forty-nine dash seventeen dash twenty-nine. Sabrina, how did I do? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, it is.
Brother. This is to bring it forward, right?
Sir.
This is the vote we taking now to bring it forward?
To add it to the agenda.
To add it to the agenda.
That's right.
You, so are you a yes or no?
No, you can bring it. I'm, I'm against the order now, though, but I had no problem with you.
So you, you're a yes?
Yeah, let bring it.
Okay, that vote is unanimous. You scared?
Yeah, it got to be unanimous.
Okay, all right. So the i- item is now added to the agenda. Uh, now.
Order ratifying the city attorney's execution of an agreed order with the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality related to alleged violations of Mississippi Code annotated section seventeen dash seventeen dash five, seventeen dash seventeen dash two two seven and forty-nine dash seventeen dash twenty-nine.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved a proper second on this item. Uh, are there any questions, comments?
I'm against it now, right?
I'm just doing it.
All right.
And, and, and so will I because, uh, a couple of things, last minute. And, and then the, the, you know, we should have already established whether who's gonna sign it.
Yeah.
Oh, 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 one, one sec. So, because clarify, I don't want nobody to say anything that goes against the record of what we've already agreed upon, I said.
Right.
This was already agreed upon. It is not last minute. This was something that we talked about for some minute now ever since we knew this was coming.
Right, what I'm.
Hold on, let me finish. We had a city attorney that is no longer here. And that city attorney was the signature now. He's the new city attorney. So he will have to sign. And then the council, we also said that before he signed anything, that we wanted him to get approval from us before he signed. So this is what this is. So I just want to say that. All right, you could go ahead if you have any comment.
Well, it's, it was just that. I wanted to make sure that, you know, that, that we understand who signed what when.
Sure.
Yes, I agree with everything, Mr. President, uh, that was said, and I have no problems with it. But establishing who gets to go to DEQ and who they will accept as a signature.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it's important.
So, so two things on that. The, the only reason I brought it as an emergency item rather than waiting for the next council meeting was because, uh, the signature, the agreement actually fell between council meetings. And by the time this was brought to my attention that there was any question about the authority, uh, we were in a spot where I couldn't get it on, on this council agenda in the regular course of time. Um, and second, as far as who's signing it, I frankly think MDQ is wrong. I think the city attorney has the authority to sign a legal agreement on behalf of the city once the council has authorized the city attorney to do so, which the council did. Um, the, the only things I've seen have to do with releases and some things that frankly aren't addressed here. But it's prudent to, to do this to make sure there's not a question about the binding authority of the agreement.
Since we're trying to get on the good graces of DEQ, Rob just need to follow their protocol.
That's part of it.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, my position hadn't changed. Think last time we talked, I asked if they made a determination where the, where will the appeals process go to? Think you said Chancery?
Correct.
My position is let's go to court. I think this is too much money for a, an agency, not a judge. And the agency to tell this city, no other city's gonna have to pay something like this. You know, it seemed like bias is somewhere against Jackson. So not that you didn't negotiate good, but I still feel that we need to let a judge tell us this. And we may go through the proper appellate process to make sure that we get our rights covered. And once we agree, there's no appeal.
That's correct.
Let me ask a question just for clarity. I just want to make sure. Uh, even after doing this, this is just saying that this is what we could agree to based on the fine that was levied, but there still has to be a hearing and we still have a process. There's still a hearing before the commission and it, it then will there be a process to appeal?
So we're getting close to this place where, this place where we probably should go to executive session.
Okay.
Uh.
Okay.
Uh, and I'd be glad to answer those questions, but I think that's executive session question.
Okay, yeah, well, I think. Okay, all right. All right, well, any other questions come? All in favor? Oppose? All right, item passes five to two. All right. Thank you, colleagues. Uh, colleagues, we have come down to the discussion portion. Uh, I have the first item of discussion, which was eight one one membership. Um, colleagues, twenty seventeen, uh, Councilwoman Lindsay and I met with Atmos uh, about the importance of making sure we completed, uh, the eight one one membership process and that we were incomplete. Compliance, all right. Um, we received a letter and in that letter, um, based on what was alleged atmo, from Atmos, that the city of Jackson was not in compliance with that eight one one membership. As we know, Atmos is under, um, investigation, uh, when it comes to the explosions and the various gas leaks that have happened all over South Jackson. And so one of the things that we want to make sure is that we are in compliance. And I think we all received that letter from, uh, you did too. We all received that letter from, uh, the Public Service Commissioner of the Central District.
Stamps.
Uh-huh, a- and apparently as this goes on, we don't want the city to be to blame to where either, whether there's a contractor or subcontractor or the city that's going and digging, that we are not complying with that membership process. A- and we know during the investigation, there might be a lot of things that are being said because nobody wants to take the blame. But at the end of the day, um, we just want to make sure that we are, uh, doing our part. And so I put this on discussion. I did have a conversation, come on, uh, with, uh, the city engineer, uh, Robert Lee, um, who gave me a satisfactory answer. And I would like for you all to hear for the record since we all received that letter. And then if there's any questions, we may do so. Uh, Robert Lee?
Robert Lee, city engineer, just kind of flashback to September of twenty twenty-two. Uh, the legislature had passed, uh, law as far as having the ARPA state funds for water, sewer and drainage. And the city was working to apply for water and sewer funds at the time while we were still under the water plant emergency. In that legislation required that in order to be able to be, um, uh, potential funded projects, you had to be a member of Mississippi eight one one. So we worked through the months of August and September with everything else going on to get compliant. Um, we did get our acceptance letter signed by Mississippi eight one one on September the eighth. And our certificate, which is still in this black cover folder and stored away for safekeeping, um, is dated September twenty-ninth, which is one day before the September thirtieth deadline for submission for those ARPA projects. The city is still in good standing with Mississippi eight one one. The location, the locating services is now under the third party manager, once, when the sewer system went over to TED. But we are in good standing with Mississippi eight one one. And I'm, I still get the emails asking for locates because I'm copied on those emails just to make sure.
Okay, thank you. I'm, yes, Councilman Hartley?
Not for Mr. Lee. Uh, have a, just a general question that actually is probably, uh, more for Mrs. Payne. Uh, ooh, the first day I came to the, uh, command center there, uh, and I met the president and all the, you know, chiefs and sub chiefs and stuff. Uh, I was concerned about, okay, the safety of our people. And they went through a dance about, well, we're here to make sure all the lines are safe. We got this. But from the look of this whole circus out there, I could tell that something's up. But he assured me no one was in, in danger or anything. And he skipped the major point that I wasn't aware of until I saw it on TV. And that is, we already had someone killed. There was already an explosion. And so I guess I'm, I'm just, uh, asking, do we have a good relationship, p, uh, public, uh, relationship with them so that the people can be informed all the time? And I know they have their own sports, uh, their own spokesman. And I have spoken, uh, with them, uh, and I, essentially I think Mr. Morgan. But from that first encounter, I wasn't given the major point, okay? And then the next time, the next week, I spoke with the president again. And I told him how displeased I was that he left out that lead. And so, uh, I just want to make sure from our PR that we have in fact, uh, you know, established a good communication with them and we are getting accurate information because people need to know.
Melissa Payne, communications. Um, our relationship, uh, is a good relationship. Um, and he has reached out several times to make sure that those pieces of information don't fall between the cracks. Just keep in mind, the media was going to them for information, not necessarily to us because it was their thing. Um, but we are working to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
And thank you. And I, I hope, you know, that lapse of information, real, real reliable information doesn't happen again. But I, you know, I, I told him, look, man, you left out the lead here and that's a problem. And, uh, and you, and then the next week when I talked with him, he said, well, we didn't want to make, we didn't want to get the public concern. There's already a, a death, a fatality, already explosion. You need to come in telling us the truth about this, okay? Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, uh. Any, any other questions or comments? All right, um, item thirty-four.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this item is to do with the cleanup and our budget for that cleanup. Uh, I think I had requested some information. I appreciate the information. I think Mr. Millenbeck or Mr. Wright, one of you guys sent me the information. But our budget, you know, uh, and I, I think it reflected that we had less than four hundred thousand dollars to clean up dilapidated properties and overgrown properties. And I was wondering if there any way that, or any other location we can look to, uh, any stash that we're not using so we can increase that budget so we can get more properties cleaned up?
Yeah, so, uh, just to be clear, uh, uh, two lines where, uh, this work is funded. One is a general fund through, uh, planning and development.
Okay.
Uh, and also there is, uh, the blight elimination program. Uh, the amount you're talking about is what is remaining as available. Uh, they have a significant amount encumbered, um, over a million dollars that's already encumbered, right? So there was about four hundred thousand dollars left to expend, right? So. Right, the blight elimination.
Okay.
Yes.
And the other?
Uh, the general fund portion, uh, it's about three hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, i- is what they have in general fund.
Okay.
Right, uh, planning and development, general fund.
Okay.
And then blight elimination, I believe it was about, uh, maybe one point eight, one, one point five, one point eight.
And right now we're down to four hundred?
Four hundred, that's not committed, that's not encumbered.
Okay, so until the next fiscal year, we have about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No, 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 but just, just, just to give understanding, as we, when we set the budget, I want you to remember when we set that budget for the Department of Planning, they have their own revenue generating source. And so she can pull from that revenue. So, so last year she made about one point some million. This year she can make some more million. So as we appropriate that, she does have revenue generating where that can change, but it goes up. It's not going down.
Okay, so, uh, I, I was just going with the funding sources he mentioned. And one, he mentioned, we have a remaining of four hundred thousand and the other one.
From the revenue generator.
Okay, yeah, okay. And so what I'm asking though is, is there a way we can increase that? Is there any pockets of money out there? I can, I can go through three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one neighborhood, okay? Just cleaning it all up. So that's my question. Is there a way to gain more information? And this question comes from, uh, uh, from a constituent. Uh, you know, I was like, hey, well, talking to them, we had one item for cleanup on last month's, uh, agenda. And, uh, and then that, they asked me, well, how much did we budget it for? And so I'm trying to eliminate any, any issues there and see if we can't, uh, give them the money, planning the money that they need to do more.
So in terms of the amount that's encumbered and that goes to the, uh, blight elimination partners, uh, I'm not sure what the schedule is. Uh, I think the planning department can give us that. Uh, so that, that's to unexpended, it's encumbered, uh, because it's, uh, going to those blight elimination partners.
So yes, we can get more money?
I mean, so there are always possibilities. Uh, we'll, we'll have to talk to planning department to see what their plan is.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Item thirty-five.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Doc, before you sit down, let me ask you a question. The, um, the ten million, I had it on the agenda. Have we got the check in yet? Is it in the bank?
No, we have not received, uh, the money yet. There's still a process that the legal team is working through. Uh, but yes, the, the fines have not come through yet.
How long before?
Drew Martin, city attorney. Uh, I'll have an answer for you. That within a couple of days, actually. We were, I've got a phone call to return on that very issue, uh, when we get back this afternoon. I think that we'll have the first check because there's going to be, I think what we're gonna do is, is end up with two checks. The first one will be the amount that was previously announced, but I think we're gonna get a second check after that. Um, and I'm gonna go ahead and get them to send it because we've got some other things held, holding up with the Jones Group payment. Um, and that may take a little more time to resolve, but we might as well get the money that we've got in the meantime.
The reason I asked, uh, y'all can guide me on this. I was hoping for when this money is earmarked, that we could look at summer jobs. Uh, a lot of these young people today, they really need summer jobs. They are in a position now where they want to have, be somewhat independent. That summer job will help them buy school supplies, clothes and other things. Uh, we need money to hire more people during the summer months. And I say that because I can identify, uh, the gangs that's increasing, bullying that's increasing, and we got to find a way to offset that. And for those who work summer jobs over the years, it created an avenue of pride. Have their own little check and even if the mother or father still have to drive them to the mall or store to buy their shoes, but they feel i- it's, it's a wordiness that they feel. So I want to place an item on the agenda to make sure that we have proper funding for summer jobs. But I would like, um, Doc, if you can get me how many summer jobs that we had from nineteen ninety through twenty? but I would like, um, Doc, if you can get me how many summer jobs that we had from nineteen ninety through twenty-twenty-three? Each year from nineteen ninety through twenty-twenty-three, and I try to have some on the agenda for the next meeting, but I really think that if we're gonna save a number of these young people that's about to make the wrong decision, summer jobs is an avenue that we must explore. Thank you.
Sir, Councilman Socks.
Yeah.
If I, if I would take this opportunity, uh, to share that, that the city does host, uh, uh, Summer Youth Employment Program, where we hire youth, uh, during the summer months, uh, and currently, uh, they've been advertising, uh, and also recruiting. Uh, so just want to take this moment to disseminate to the community that the city does indeed provide an opportunity for our youth. And also, as you talk about, uh, swimming pools, uh, you hear, uh, the, uh, the lack of getting sufficient staffing for, uh, uh, for guards, um, and this is an opportunity. I, I think, uh, the Parks and Recreation is, uh, looking at, uh, an opportunity with, uh, the youth uh, to take on, uh, uh, these positions, and so just wanted to highlight that uh, and, and share with the community, uh, that, that we do have an opportunity for the youth.
Well, what I was saying, Doc, is that, uh, some of the prior years, they hired more young people than they're hiring now. And the young people that we really, really need to touch, we're not touching them. By us not creating these summer jobs for them, that criminal element is picking them up. And once they get in bed with either dope boys, whatever you want to call them, they not coming back for us to save. Right now, they borderline, a number of them, and we have a chance to save them, and we got to save them now because they start becoming fascinated with that gangster, that hustler. And if, I believe that we could capture their attention, let them see their mavericks sit or council, let them see public works, let them get fascinated with something positive versus being fascinated with something that's gonna send them to the penitentiary. That's why I'm saying we need more summer jobs. I can point out the success stories all over this city where those summer jobs saved them, and the lady was speaking about the summer meals. It helped a whole lot of these kids, I was telling them on interview I did, we called it whiff booty, one number, but a, but a bologna sandwich and some cookies, but kept them out of trouble. That's what we need to, yeah, whiff booty. But that's what we need to prepare for right now, how we keep these young people out of trouble, so they'll be able to go back to stu-, go back to school versus going to the cemetery. Thank you.
All right, uh, any, any other discussion?
I'm gonna hold my other item, uh, Mary Jones, thank you.
All right. All right, uh, thirty-seven, Councilman Pope.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President.
You sure you want to hold it?
Turn your mic on, Councilman Pope.
She waited there.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, there's already been, or already has been a fair amount said about, uh, the garbage RFP. Uh, it's a pretty serious issue that, that the media has a lot of interest in. You know, we started this meeting with a really, um, high-level musical presentation by students from JSU, and their message was excellence without excuse. And the, now, the last item, the, the emergency item, with the meeting, the regular agenda ended on, was, uh, about paying nine hundred thousand dollars, um, because we didn't execute on, uh, the, our role, the city government, in accomplishing the RFP with a successful conclusion with four votes by the council. So we're still mired in this situation. The, I've put the garbage RFP on the agenda over the past ten months sixteen times, because I don't want to fail this time, and I don't want us to have excuses to the citizens who are the main victims of us, of this whole exercise. Not only do nine hundred thousand dollars of the city's money go to MDEQ instead of to services for them, but, uh, they had to go through all the chaos and anxiety of not having garbage picked up for eighteen days. You know, the, it's fairly simple, the RFP process, we're the legislature, the mayor's the executive, and, um, we, we're part of the process to do an RFP, and, and we're paying that nine hundred thousand dollars fine because the mayor ignored us and marginalized, uh, the city council, and we didn't, he didn't, he, he basically abandoned the RFP and gave Richards the notice to proceed without a valid contract. So it's imperative we do this correct, that we do it right, and, and the, the council has a, a say in this, in the system, which is the way it's set up in law, and we've got to get this right this time. We, we don't want to go through this exercise again. Let's take the advice of the students from JSU. You know, let's, let's, uh, focus on excellence without excuses. I mean, too many excuses over the past twenty-four, uh, twelve months, even really actually longer than that. Um, and I'm tired of going to MDEQ and trying to, you know, bargain with them, uh, for, for all these, you know, um, errors along the way. So I think we need to focus on excellence in completing this project the way it's supposed to be, where the, the law's set up with the RFP, where the, where the council has a vote, we have a say in this. Waiting until the last minute in an attempt to, I assume, marginalize the voice, voice of the council, I think is a big mistake. And so I, I, um, asked the administration to really make this their number-one priority, get the RFP, uh, and their, their recommendation by the mayor to us as soon as possible, so we'll have a chance to get see, feedback from the citizens who are really the people we're supposed to be serving. And they, they need, they deserve a voice, they pay the tax, taxes, they, they, you know, um, put up with us and, uh, vote for us, and, uh, we need to focus on the interest of the citizens, and that means, you know, knowing that, that they're gonna get garbage service, and it'll be well done. Thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, yes, yes, sir.
The headline in some of the media, and it's been mentioned here a couple of times, that, the, the agreement with the city and MDEQ is not nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that, uh, let's be, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we're, the city's gonna pay three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars as long as we keep having garbage picked up. The rest is in abeyance, and so I, I just want to make sure everybody knows that, because that's important.
Well, I was just reading the fifth where it is, where it says, I think it's the fifth, one, two, three, fourth, says the terms of the agreed order provide that the sum of nine hundred thousand dollars will be assessed against the city of Jackson for alleged violation.
Yes, sir, and the next whereas says that the sum of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars will be paid in two separate installments, and then it's two more, or three more whereas is down, says the remaining sum of five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars will be held in abeyance for two years, pending the city's compliance with the terms of the agreed order and the city's solid waste management plan. So, what, that, that means different things, but it also means that we won't be assessed, we won't pay that five twenty-five, uh, if we can.
If we get wrapped, if we.
Correct.
Focus on excellence.
Correct, correct, I just want to make sure that we understood.
Yeah, thank, thank, thank you, Drew, and, and, and let me just say this for the record, when we first started meeting with MDEQ, the request was that we mentioned nothing nor put anything in writing when it came to a fine, because it could change, it could change for the better or it could change for the worse. And remember that it was more than what was stated today, it was, it was more. And we've done some things to bring that down, and we may can still do some things. And so all of that is not final and said yet, this is just the back and forth. And so what Drew, uh, the city attorney's attempt to do was, because it was mentioned prematurely in the media, then for the record, it had to be corrected, uh, but this is still a moving ball that, um, are, are, a moving target, should I say, that we can still work through, and the citizens get the best outcome. So let me say that, and to the media, just, just hold tight, so that at the end of the day, I know you want to bust a story, but at the end of the day, you can devastate what we're trying to work out to be more of a burden for the citizens, and i- it's not worth getting your story out and something burdens the citizens, so just give us time to do what we elected to do. Thank you. Uh, the next item is just to acknowledge, item thirty-eight, monthly financial reports as required according to section twenty-one, thirty-five, thirteen. I, I let the record reflect that it has been received by, uh, six, one count, by those present, all six present. All right, uh, any other questions or comments, or anything else to come before this body? That being said, meet the journey.